Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, this meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped. If there are representatives from the media doing the same, would you kindly identify yourselves, please?
I'm 20 News, Raphael.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. Our first item under public comments is the crumbling foundations issue, and we have speaking first is Mr. Russell Dupere. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I was...
Can you, when you've stated your name, would you just state your address?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Russell Dupere. I live in Long Meadow, Massachusetts, 134 Ashford Road.
You're pulled out of the room. You're a little too close to my spot.
Oh, too close?
Yeah.
Is that better?
That's great.
Okay. So I'm actually an attorney, and I represent public board, so I am completely familiar with the fact that you won't be engaged in a dialogue with me today. I just wanted to come to kind of start the conversation as far as what the issue is and my experience as a homeowner that had the crumbling concrete issue. I think I'm maybe the first in the area that actually kind of went public about it. We found out about four years ago. You actually had somebody in town that had the issue long before I did. I can't remember his name. I think it might be Bill Johnson, potentially. So I spoke with him...
He is with us tonight. He's in the audience.
Okay. I've never met him before, but I spoke with him early in the process. And so it was a surprise because I didn't think, I had no idea about this issue at all. Connecticut clearly had the issue, but I had a flood in my basement, took down the walls, concrete was crumbling on one of the walls, and Liberty Mutual paid for a test. I found out I had the issue, and in fact, it is all over Massachusetts as well, in Western Mass, Central Mass. So as things went along, I met with Eric Lesser, Brian Ash, and they helped me in a number of ways, and now we have a testing program for the issue. A lot of people are not taking advantage of that because it's one of those things where you can test, and you find out you have it, and there's no cure. Because there's no, unlike Connecticut and Quebec and Ireland, there's no money that's really available to fix the problem. So what ended up happening in addition to that is Eric Lesser and I think some of the other legislators put together a governor's commission, and I was asked to be on it, as well as Michelle Leglessi, who's another homeowner. That was our role in the commission, and I'm not presenting on behalf of the commission. I just happen to be on the commission. We issued a report, and that report, I was sent to all of you as well. We made a number of recommendations. They were basically in line with what Connecticut did, so there would be state assistance financially for people with the issue. There would be hopefully an agreement with the company down in Connecticut, because they're still selling the concrete. There's an agreement in Connecticut not to do it for residential, in Connecticut only. We don't have any agreement like that in Massachusetts. So my understanding is that that concrete is, or may still be coming into Massachusetts currently. So that's one recommendation in our report. We also think there should be more, through the realtors, we need to have sign-offs so people understand that this could be a problem. And it's really houses from 1983 to the current, although an engineer in Connecticut told me that he's found some before 1983, so I don't know if that's been confirmed or not. And we also found that that 20-mile radius is actually not accurate. So we found at least one house that was 44 miles away. So this goes as far out as Charlton. There's confirmed cases there, and Sturbridge, Wales, and we think it goes out to as far out as Agawam and Westfield, and north to places like Ware, Belcher Town. So we have a map in the report that kind of details that. I think one thing that's important for East Long Meadow is that you happen to have a huge amount of growth in those couple decades, or three decades. So your town, if you looked on Realtor.com, which I've done recently, almost all your houses that are, you know, let's say 500,000 or more, seem to be in that timeframe. In Long Meadow, it's very similar. About half of our houses, when I last looked, out of the top 12, six of them were built in this timeframe. Now, obviously, not all of those houses were built using that concrete, but the estimate is that J.J. Modus had about 30 percent market share. So when you look at that, and you know that there are certain builders that typically use them in our area, certain big builders, like mine was McCullough. He built all over Summers and Long Meadow. I'm not sure if he built in East Long Meadow. I assume he did. And you have some other major builders here that we're using consistently, maybe not all the time, because as any contractor, sometimes you might use somebody else. But I know in my field, I use a stain stenographer unless they're busy, and then occasionally I go to somebody else. And I think that's the same thing with most builders. So in Connecticut, what they found is whole neighborhoods were lifted, foundation fixed, and put back down. And the reason I'm really here today is to hope that the council will consider meeting with some of the other area boards. I know I've been in discussion with Long Meadow. I've already met with them in the past, and I think I'm going to meet with them again, to perhaps have a joint meeting where the different local boards can meet and talk about it. Because the recommendations really help the homeowners, but it also helps the board, it helps the taxpayer. Because what happened to me, for example, is I got an abatement, and I would have had abatement for a long time if I hadn't fixed my house. Because I fixed the house, I had the abatement for two years, and then I was able to go back on the tax roll completely. But I have three mortgages that I have, you know, it's very difficult to pay the three mortgages, and it's, there's a lot of people that just will never be able to do that. I had to get a personal loan. The banks won't loan you money. So I'm hoping that's one aspect or outcome of this eventually. The other thing that I think would help is if the local boards will support the recommendations we made in that report. I know Brian Ash and Eric Lesser and Todd Smola and Ann Goby, we have a lot of support, I think, from the local legislators, but it would be good if they hear from the towns that this is really important. Because what's happening right now is the homeowners are suffering, there's people foreclosing. I know of people in Long Meadow that have just been selling for 300 grand less than they would have normally got. All of that hurts the tax base. So right now, the town's paying for it through abatements and lower sales, and the homeowners are really paying for it. And so as part of that report, you'll see that basically the homeowners are going to have to be part of the solution ultimately. I think through abatements, the towns will be part of the solution, but hopefully for a short period of time. And then the state, and hopefully FEMA, will also get involved. And then, in my opinion, the insurance companies need to be more accountable here than they were in Connecticut. Because our policies all basically covered it until they amended the policies years ago, and now there's no coverage on the most expensive part of your house. So that, in a nutshell, is really why I came, is to kind of start that process, and hopefully at some future meeting, you can talk about, you know, whether you could support the report, whether you could have meetings with other boards, and, you know, just start talking about the issue, and maybe talking to townspeople as well.
I think the seven or eight recommendations that are in the report make a lot of sense. They're very easy to understand, and I can only speak for myself, but it seems that our council, at some point, we're here, we were elected by the voters to represent them and help them, and so if meeting with a Long Meadow board and a Wilberham board and whomever else to raise awareness and give greater voice, we certainly will take that move. How many of you in the audience actually have access to a copy of that report? Most of you, okay. I'm wondering if we can ask our clerk to just get that report up on the website, just for folks who haven't had access to it, and some of the schematics are in color, and it's easier to print those color copies from your own devices, and you have that in front of you. But thank you for all that. It's very informative.
Do you mind if I add one thing that I realized today was important? So I just did a TV interview down in Connecticut earlier today, and one thing I don't think people realize, and I know personally, some people in my town in particular have said to me, "Well, I'm just going to wait." You know, they think they might have it, but they're going to wait. They don't want tests. They're just going to figure it out later. There was a family in Connecticut recently where they waited, and they came forward, and there was money, and they tried to access it, and it turned out their house was so, it had deteriorated to the point where they couldn't lift it, so they had to demolish the house. So it's not something where you can really wait 10 or 20 years. I mean, once you see you have the problem, it actually happens. Like my house, once I saw it, within three years, that one wall became like, you know, a large area of my basement started to crack, because it cracks from the inside out. So when they cut through my walls, it was like sawdust, even the walls that looked good. So they ended up using jackhammers to knock it out because the saw was falling through it. So it's not something where, I know a lot of people are waiting because they're afraid, but if you wait, it can ultimately mean that your house can't even be fixed at all. So it's a very difficult situation ultimately. But thank you for listening to me.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, so again, the council is very much interested in this, and we are committed to becoming involved in the awareness process and helping the groundswell grow so that our legislators and our insurance companies start putting their heads together for more pathways to assist folks. Thank you for your participation this evening. You're certainly welcome to stay for as long in the meeting as you wish. Our second comment this evening is regarding speeding and traffic on Rural Lane. Mr. Cuzniars.
Thank you.
I'll wait.
It is too bad. Newspapers and everything presented it like a public hearing.
They did present it that way on television.
But it helps us see how many people might be on the hook here.
You know what I wanted to find out? How many actually had the test?
I know, but if we started to come talk and we'd be trapped.
And some of them wouldn't say. Some of them wouldn't be, they'd be afraid to tell you. They'd be afraid.
Well, he's right. It's like, you want to have the test, but like, what if you find out? It's bad.
What if you find out you have polio disease?
You just stained your property. Now you can't, you can't, you'd have to disclose that property became for sale.
We're all set for you now, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name's Tony Cuzniars. I live on 59 Rural Lane. I wanted to come tonight to continue a discussion I've had with Mary, and then previous business manager, along with Chief of Police and Director of DPW. So it involves my road and my neighborhood, Rural Lane. Not sure if you all know where that is. I'm sure you do. So our concern is the traffic, and along with the traffic, the speeding and people cutting through our neighborhood. So if you're not familiar with the road, it was originally designed as a dead-end street. Our house, my house, was 1960. My house was the last house on the street. In the '70s, the road expanded to Pilgrim, and then connected down to Parker Street. I think unknowingly at the time, and traffic not being what it is, there was no thought given to what that would create in the future. So I'm sure that anyone who lives in town knows that that four-way intersection of Porter and Parker, and the four-way stop backs up, so in the morning and the evening. So I got two little girls that go to school at Meadow Brook, so Ella and Abby. They're six and eight. Anyone who goes to school also knows that traffic builds up. So what ends up happening is Rural Lane becomes the cut-through. In the morning, it cut, people coming from, coming from into school, cut through, buses cut through, delivery trucks cut through, post office drivers cut through, landscapers cut through, and every other person getting to Porter cuts through. In the evening, it's the opposite. So anyone who lives on that other side of town cuts through from the other way. And if you've been down our road recently, you know, it's been paved in the last 10 years or so. Slope's down, and it's relatively straight. So what happens? You don't know you're going 40 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour. The police had done a report with the test strip that, you know, does the count of traffic and speed. They clocked someone over 70 miles an hour. So the road is simply unsafe. You know, we moved to the neighborhood about five years ago. We have neighbors who've lived there for 45 years. They're, they have grandkids. They can't allow anyone near the road. We can't have our kids play in our driveways if they're going to be near the road. We can't let them play in the front yard. You can't walk down the street. You can't walk your dog down the street. You can't let your kids ride your bike down the street. The fear of getting hit. People driving, you know, Massachusetts has our new law, thankfully, for, you know, distracted driving, but everybody and anybody who cuts through that street speeds 100 percent. If they don't live there, they speed, period. So we've worked and asked, I've been asking for four years for something to be done. I've had meetings. We had a town meeting. We had a community meeting in our neighborhood, summer of 2018, with the Chief of Police came out. Most of our neighborhood was there, and we expressed our concerns that, as a neighborhood, we're asking the town to help, you know, to help us. You know, we're, we feel helpless. All of the neighbors are of the same mind. So if I can present something, if not, I can present it to Mary. We have a petition signed by almost everyone on our street, up and down. We didn't go as much onto Pilgrim, but almost everyone I've talked to on Pilgrim, everyone who has kids, shared the same concern. We chose to move there because neighborhood, not a main road. It's right now treated and acted like it's a main road. So I wanted to officially come here, present some of that information. The town has done something. So two years ago, there was a stop sign put at the end of Rural Lane as it intersects to Pilgrim, heading out to Parker. You wouldn't think of there being a stop sign there, but we thought it would help slow people down as they're coming down. It doesn't. No one stops. If they choose to even look at the sign, they just drive right through. We've come up with various other models and other ideas, and I'll be very frank. What we were told, and what I was told, is if we do something on your street, we're going to have to do something for everyone else in the town that has a problem. You know? Quite frankly, my answer was, you should want to do something for everyone in the town that has a problem and a concern. You know, we're not here just talking about it. We're concerned, you know? And that was the answer that we got. So for three-plus years, nothing's happened. You know, the police will be out there and patrol very rarely. You know, they'll be responsive at times, but then they'll be there for a day or two, and they're gone, and you don't see them again for six months, you know? And then nothing else happens. So one of the things that we've talked about, and I'll just give a little context. So what I do for work, I'm a facility manager for a school district. I work for the city of North Hampton. So part of my job is the safety and security of school buildings, you know, and kids, you know, coming and going to school, you know? And I feel like in my own town, I can help contribute to that and help my own kids in our own neighborhood. So I'm speaking now for myself, but also my neighbors who sign this petition and are just pleading and asking, address it somehow, look into options, do something. I don't think, in this day and age, that an answer of, "Well, if we do something for you, we'll have to do something for everyone else," shouldn't be an answer. So again, just think of the safety. We're really, that's all we're concerned about, the safety of our kids, the safety of our families. Well, honestly, it's an older neighborhood, and there's more new families coming in. There's several families that live on the street that have kids six to eight years old, you know, that are all going to school with my daughters, or all going to Meadow Brook, all going to Mountain View, and they can't walk down the street. You know, we have friends that live two streets down. One's a teacher, and their husband's a police officer in Springfield. They can't walk to her house, you know? And I don't know that I'll ever allow her to walk to their house, two houses down, you know? Not something that we should want, you know? We moved to East Long Meadow, and we're from the area because it's a great town, family-friendly, schools, you know? We just like to hope that something can be done. So I don't know if I can present this or give this to anybody, but...
You can leave that petition with our clerk, and we'll be provided with copies of it.
I'd also like to present to you just a letter that my wife, who's a high school teacher in Long Meadow, wrote to Senator Eric Lesser also, just kind of reiterating some of the same things we talked about, and just try to raise general awareness on safety in these smaller neighborhood streets, you know? And people driving too fast through town, and the feeling that, eh, just, I don't live there, so it's a cut-through. I can get to my house 30 seconds quicker. I don't have to sit in traffic. So why does it matter? But when you're sitting in your front yard, watering your grass, and all you see on a Friday evening, or a car's going 50 miles an hour down your street, you know, really feel like something should be done about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any comments under council comments this evening?
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Quite a few meetings ago, we had discussed and appropriated money for an audit to be done, and I was just looking to try and find out where that stood, if we had hired someone, and where it was going.
Good question, and I will, I'm going to have to wait for Ms. McNally to finish and direct that question to her.
So with that being said, I'll just add a little bit. We heard about crumbling foundations. Obviously, I'm in the landscape construction industry, and we've been dealing with pool patios and back concrete patios, and I couldn't understand why some of them, you put the forks in, and it just came up as powder, and other, you were taking large chunks, and this perfectly explains it with the water and the air. So obviously, the foundations are the most important. That's your house. A patio, most people can replace, but it's not just limited to foundations. It's any place concrete was used, whether it be residential or business. It's just, it's pretty widespread.
I'm a little troubled by the statement that some of the materials could still conceivably be coming into our area because no action to this point has been taken by the state of Massachusetts.
I was dumbfounded by that.
I understand. You know, Connecticut took some action on it.
Well, I had heard that the concrete company had gone out, had gone bankrupt, but I guess they're talking about quarry where Stone comes from, so...
We had a question while you were speaking with the last gentleman regarding the request and the, our allocation of up to $2,500 to do an independent audit.
Are you referring to the employment situation with the town clerk?
Yes.
There's no answer yet on that.
Okay, so it's still on the table, still being worked on.
Yes. I understand there's a, the town accountant's, the town auditor has given the town accountant a brief scope of services, but I've not seen it yet. So it's on my to-do list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five, town managers. I'm sorry, you have one more comment?
A council comment, yes. I wanted to, similar to Ralph, I wanted to remind us that the town manager performance goals are due March 15th, according to contract.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And we wouldn't want to slip on that.
Thank you. We'll add it to the to-do list.
Can I make one quick comment?
Certainly.
On a positive note, from, one of the comments was trying to make our meetings more visible. Ryan did a great job of posting our meeting up, and was able to share, and it was easy to read, JPEG, so.
Yep.
Bravo. Ryan Quimby, a little kudos there.
Good. Thank you. Okay, town managers' report.
Okay, thank you. First order of business, I just want to introduce Jesse Belcher-Tim, who's our new town council. Jesse's employed by the firm of Doherty Wallace in Springfield, and I know I went around and introduced him to all of you before the formal meeting began, but he'll be present at our meetings as necessary or as requested, and the department heads know that if they have questions for town council, that those requests will be channeled through my office so that we can more or less keep track of Jesse's efforts on our behalf. But we're happy to have him, and he's got a great resume and a great law firm that supports him, so I think the town's in good hands.
Thank you.
The transfer of existing files and discussion of pending litigation matters will be addressed between Jesse and myself and former town council from Buckley Richardson in the next week or so. The file transfer is being affected within the next day or two. Several major issues have concluded since your last meeting. For the most part, however, they deal with contract matters and personnel issues that I think have to be the subject of executive session at a later date, so going to reserve further comment on that. We have completed the first draft of the operational budget, as well as the first draft of all the department capital budget requests for fiscal '21. That's, I really want to praise the department heads for the effort that they made in preparing those documents. Everybody that was scheduled with the finance director and myself was prepared. In many cases, they brought a whole chorus to support the, particularly the capital projects, and they put a lot of work into it, so I, I'm trying to prepare them for the fact that they won't get everything that's on those lists, but the preparation actually is remarkable, very good. We have a, an employee of Ryan Quimby's department, Mary Race of the IT. She was selected as a Tyler Community Elite User for 2020 for her dedication to our immunis environment. She's going to be honored at a conference in Florida that's going to be held in March, and there were only 13 honorees nationwide, and Mary's one of them. So we're very pleased with her efforts and her willingness to always cooperate. We see her in town hall and various offices all the time, happy to answer questions, and extremely helpful. And while I'm at it, I also want to thank Ryan personally for the effort he made while I was away on a brief vacation a week or two ago. I know that all the feedback I personally received from the department heads was very favorable about his interactions with them, and I know he covered all the questions that came up at your meeting on the 11th, and I really appreciate the support from his department. Our monthly department heads meeting was held on February 19th, last Wednesday, and discussion this time more or less revolved around internal protocols that I'm trying to implement. Typically, what happens at these meetings is that each department head goes around and gives an oral, short oral presentation of what's going on, and we didn't do that this month. They let me have the floor for the majority of the meeting. I informed the department heads about... I informed the department heads about certain pending contractual matters that affect all of them, and I think those are the issues that I referred to that would have to be discussed in executive session, but also, we did discuss briefly the work that's been done on the merger, pending merger, the requested merger to the Westcom Dispatch Center, and a variety of other issues. So, things are moving along, you know, it's a tough time of year because everybody's kind of feeling the heat on the budget side and trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible, and yet straining at the bit somewhat because of the needs that have been, I think, suppressed for a couple of years and may have to be suppressed for another couple of years, but we'll see about that. So, that's all I have for you tonight. We're, the, I did want to just add one thing, that the office relocation, I think, worked out very well. The clerk's office being back with the collector treasurer seems to have eased the public convenience a great deal, and although the town manager's office misses the clerk's staff tremendously, we're happy that they're happy where they are, and their convenience is better served with the vault being there and the counter and everything else, so that was a good move.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any questions for Mary at this point? Okay, moving on to approval of minutes, in your packet you have the January 28, 2020 open session minutes. If there are no items to be brought up or corrections, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approval. We'll just get through these.
I move we accept the minutes of the town council...
28th, January...
From January 28th Town Council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Also, the January 28, 2020 executive session minutes. Again, if you have any concerns, can you please raise them now? If not, then I will entertain a motion to...
I would have a question.
Okay, question?
If we turn to the backside of the page, probably about three paragraphs down, says open session was made by consular, are we looking for a name after that?
Open?
The sentence starts with the consul in general supported a residency waiver.
Oh, I see, the last, the last word.
I think it's actually repeated, I think it's actually repeated below, so it's all there, it's just duplicated.
It is, it's just...
I see what you're saying.
Pardon?
It looks incomplete.
It looks incomplete.
Yeah, I see that.
I think it's as simple as adding, as adding, as adding a name, and it is stated down below, I believe the motion covers the sentence above, so, however, however we feel it needs to be addressed.
Do you want to add the name?
I think we have a name.
Add the name. You have that, Jackie? Good. I'll entertain a motion to accept, would that correction noted?
So, I'll make a motion to accept the executive session of the January 28, 2020 Town Council meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes unanimously. And finally, the February 11, 2020 open session minutes. Those are in the packet as well, if there are questions, please raise them now. Anyone? I move we accept the open session minutes of the February 11, 2020 Town Council meeting.
Some moved?
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Those minutes pass as well.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Are we up to temperature in here yet? Is anybody else hot in this room?
It's warm.
He's like, it's gotta be me.
I figured it was those pain pills you were on.
No, it's Ryan back there, he's controlling that.
His secret little control pad.
We're usually cold.
He'll freeze.
Item seven, communication correspondence and announcements, anything from the council? Okay, under item eight, public hearings, we have a continuation from January 28, 2020 regarding the transfer of license for GMRC Incorporated doing business as Fugata at 621 North Main Street to Barrera Incorporated doing business as Casa Vallarta Family Mexican Restaurant. I'll open that public hearing now. The reason for this hearing is a continuation of the public hearing from February, it says February 11th, and this one previous to, I was reading from the agenda, and now I'm reading from my protocol, Jeannie, so it was the 11th. Okay. So, as a correction, this is a continuation of the public hearing from February 11, 2020 to approve the transfer from GMRC doing business as Fugata to Barrera Incorporated doing business as Casa Vallarta Family Mexican Restaurant. Counselors from my left are Richardson, Page, Anderson, Hill...
Who?
Who?
You're gonna tell Marilyn's name again?
What did I say, Richardson?
It doesn't matter, I'll answer it, Richardson.
Oh, well, the son of, Richardson, Page, next time we're wearing name tags, that's it. Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. I'll ask our court now to read the legal notice into the record, please.
Notice is hereby given under chapter 138 of the general laws that Barrera Incorporated DBA Casa Vallarta Family Mexican Restaurant has applied for a liquor license transfer currently held by GMRC Incorporated DBA Fugata, 621 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, to Barrera Incorporated DBA Casa Vallarta Family Mexican Restaurant. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, February 11, 2020, at 6:30 PM, and this is the continuation, in the Council on Aging Media Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, for the counsel, Jeannie Quagletti, Town Clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you. The applicant now, the petitioner, has an opportunity again to present reasons and rationale for the proposed transfer of license. Attorney Oppenheimer, welcome back.
Quickly, again, some introductions, I'm Jeff Oppenheimer, greetings again from Cape Cod. With me this evening is the president of the corporation, Miguel Ramos, also known as Miguel Ramos Medina, and our manager, Raoul Andres Allegria, and another employee is here as well, Alex Barrios, who is...
We see him.
Okay. In addition, attorney Dan Kelly, who's representing Mr. Coelho, is here, along with Mr. Coelho and his daughter. So, we have in the room people, all of whom can answer any question that I might not be able to answer. To bring you up to date, we filed this morning a request for determination from the building commissioner, building inspector, for zoning purposes, and he responded within the day with his opinion that, you know, we need to get a special permit consistent with what Councilor Page raised two weeks ago. So, we, I've had a meeting with, with the town planner, and I now have all the materials that I'm told I need to file with the planning board. In addition, I attempted to answer all of the specific questions raised at the last or the first hearing on this matter two weeks ago. The town clerk provided me with a very comprehensive list, which was very helpful. I responded last week by email and by UPS overnight, and I hope that you all have a copy of my response. I'm happy to discuss any one of my responses, all of my responses, you know, that I will leave to the council to decide. We are looking for a vote this evening to grant the transfer of the liquor license, and we fully would anticipate that it would be subject to approval by the planning, the planning board. But with your approval, with that contingency, I believe we can, it can advance the ABCC while we are pursuing the special permit process within town hall. I am happy to answer any questions at all that you may have, rather than, you know, trying to guess what, what the council's interested in, let me, let me just quiet down, wait for your questions. I do want to give you a real menu, last time I was only here to provide you a photocopy. This menu is used in all of our restaurants.
Thank you.
And that should be part of your record.
Can we order out and do delivery right now?
I thought the crowd that was here before was...
Rooting for us.
But apparently not.
Okay, at this point in the hearing, the public has an opportunity to offer input. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this transfer of license, you're welcome to do so at this time. We ask that you please direct your, first come to the table, identify yourself and your address, and direct your remarks to the council itself and not to anyone else in the room. Having said that, is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak? Okay, that's relatively simple. The council will now have the opportunity to discuss the matter and ask any questions they might, so I will open the discussion now for any one of us who would like to ask any other questions.
So, would it be okay if I started, considering I supplied a very long list, which I thank you for your answers? It did answer most all of my questions. I had a concern with your answer, well, it's the last question on the first page and your first answer on the second, with regards to the special permit. You seem to, in your answer, say that you think that the special permit that was in question was only for the addition of the deck.
I've learned differently.
Perfect.
Much to my surprise, I must say, that, you know, the town essentially is considering as if this property has no permits if we, if we acquire it. So, and there is eight or nine special permits and a variance for this property. So, that's, you know, a little bit unusual in my 40 years' experience, but, you know, that's what makes this exciting. So, we're, we understand that we're starting from scratch, we have a plan. What we're, just to reiterate, the changes that we plan on making are really very few. Inside, we're taking away one of the bars on the ground floor, the smaller bar, we're not having pool tables, we're building a wall to hide our kitchen from the dining room. We are going to ask the town to use the two deck areas at the back, they're on two different levels, five or six steps apart, 32 seats, eight tables, for that to be a seasonal area for serving of food and alcohol. And other than that, there's not really any changes to the exterior, you know, to the parking lot contemplated. You know, we will get into the permit process, and maybe there will be requirements for changes, I can't tell you that, but pretty much, what, what is there is what we're seeking to permit again, including the second floor, which has a small apartment, which will be part of this whole process. I mean, the whole, I guess the whole building will be considered in its totality, along with the parking.
So, are you looking for the restaurant to be in the basement, where I believe there's banquet facility, if I read this correct? So, that'll be seating, just like a normal restaurant, and then the first floor will be seating, so it's not, you're not gonna be using the basement for just banquets, it's gonna be for everyday service?
Yeah, you know, I mean, we would be using the ground floor primarily, and when we're busy, I think we'd be sending patrons into the basement, ground floor, you know, whatever, however we...
I know, yeah, the lower level, the lowest level.
It will not just be exclusively for banquets, it would be for just regular customers coming with their families.
So, as far as my questions, I'm certain you guys all saw them, I think a lot of them had to do with the special permit, and I believe that's a lot of a planning board issue. As far as the license, one of my thoughts was, I looked at the permit, and I'm just curious if, again, this is, I don't, I haven't done a lot of liquor license, so do we give a license for specific areas within the building, or is it the whole building?
Yes. The, on the face of the license, is a description of the areas to which it applies.
Okay, 'cause it says, description of the premises, and the write-up includes bathrooms and stuff, I really don't think we're having service within a bathroom.
No, I think we have defined the eating area by footage, is that how it works?
By footage, and on the license, it would say where the service has taken place, but it does describe bathrooms, entrances, exits, seating capacity, but it does, like I said, specify where the service would be, especially if it's on the patio.
And it's on the floor plans that are part of the, the package presented with the, with the license. And I'm happy to show it, I've got, you know, large-scale plans, if you'd like to see exactly where this is all gonna be, happy to show that.
Hi.
Hi.
The special permit...
Yes.
Reference the deck area as being used only for smoking.
That's correct.
And I know this evening you're looking to include that area in liquor license and food service.
That's correct.
My question is, you know, if we were to vote contingent tonight, how do we address the deck if the neighbors come out and the concern was nuisance issues, noise factor, because you are in close proximity to residential homes, and the decision was not to have the service outside the building, how do we deal with the actual licensing of the deck area if the planning board decides that they do not want to include service on the deck in the special permit? I'm, I'm just putting it out there.
That's a good point.
Because I'm, you know, logistically, the cart before the horse.
Through, through the chair, please. Being part of the Liquor Commission, I remember that that topic came up on how the original license was gonna be issued to the previous owner, I want to say. The other issue was downstairs, the downstairs was by special permit to come back in here for any event that would take place down in the basement. So, those are the two discrepancies, I think, right now, between the way the original license was offered and what's on the table tonight.
Question?
Yes.
Or a statement? Since the language of the current special permit is ineffective with the new petitioner, pretty much all things are on the table, if you will, with the planning board, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, the issue of entertainment and so forth, because I understand they have a mariachi band that rotates between the various places, and I'm curious of coincidences, I have my one brother-in-law and his spouse live mid-Cape, and another one and his spouse, and her spouse live in Northborough, and so, of course, I asked, you're familiar with the place, and they both gave very high accolades to the place, so I just wanted to let you know that's some good, good, good comment.
So, do we have an entertainment license? I mean, obviously, we're the licensing authority, so it would be up to us as far as the entertainment license and to put into place... license and to put into place the size of the band and stuff like that.
The applicant may answer that?
Certainly.
The applicant has already included applications for entertainment, Sunday entertainment, but everything, of course, is in abeyance until it's approved by the ABCC. So I don't think it makes any sense to go ahead with those applications until all this is squared away with the ABCC.
Yeah, no, I understood that. I just wanted to make sure that it's still this board that decides on the entertainment license.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Pat.
I just wanted to make a statement following Don, saying that it's my understanding that in the past, this building has been used for something different than just a restaurant.
That's correct.
So there, I believe that some of the issues that arose, that arose directly relate to that. And while we can't ignore them, we should be taking a look at a new, as a new, completely new issue, and not weigh some of those items from the past. Having said that, it is always a concern, outdoor entertainment of any kind is always a concern for noise in residential area.
So the outdoor entertainment, just to repeat what I said two weeks ago, or to reinforce what I said two weeks ago, the mariachi band is typically three or four musicians. There's no amplification, okay? They are literally going from table to table, you know, offering to play, you know, and taking requests. Typically, a violin, a guitar, a trumpet, and an accordion, I believe. And, you know, it's not a rock band, but, I mean, it's lively music. You know? And, and if there are issues with our permit, after you issue it and after we actually have an opportunity to use it, which will be, you know, obviously several months from now, I mean, you are the licensing authority, right? And we have to come back annually to get it renewed. So I, my experience is, I mean, you certainly can let us know if there's any issues before that, but, you know, that is ultimately your, in your hands.
So, I mean, it's pretty apparent the business model has changed, and having the downstairs is basically overflow. So let's just say you're busier on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You basically need that downstairs to continue, the present form of business that you're going to be conducting upstairs is just basically for overflow, so you're not turning people away.
That's correct. Now, would it be available for a banquet if someone wanted to have, you know, a Mexican-style banquet and, you know, have a family event? Absolutely, you know. I have been in their restaurants when they had youth teams in with their coaches and parents. I would consider that approaching a banquet. And it might be a nice space for them, to be, you know, a little bit separate from the rest of the public. Maybe they're, can make a little more noise if they're, you know, young people. And, you know, so I, I'm not excluding the possibility that we would have banquets, but it would be more likely that it would be used for overflow.
And we have a procedure for that, so.
Okay.
I don't see it being an issue.
No. Anyone else?
I think the main topics that we have is whatever license we're going to issue for whatever areas that it's contingent upon, the special permit being issued for a restaurant for 621 North Main Street. I know the Cory check, you had offered to add in the AKA name. I think that should be done. Obviously, a description within the building, like Jeannie said, where the alcohol service is. I think the main concern that we're going to have right now is, do we want to include the back deck with the houses being close by for alcohol service?
And that's really something that the planning board should have, I imagine, some dialogue with.
Input, input.
So would, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so do we approve a contingent upon the planning board and, at this point in time, include the area of the deck within the scope of the license? Or do we modify it afterwards? I mean, we're, because we're, we're talking about licensing an area that may not be used, or we may not, may not license an area that will be used? I mean, it just all depends on, on how their public hearing progresses and what the intent is of the satisfying the concerns of the neighbors, if there are any. Now, we've, we've learned new use, new, new type of, of operation, and this may not be as big of an issue as it has been in the past. So I, you know, I really want to know logistically how best to move forward.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let me close the public hearing, and now we can move to, in that direction. Go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve the transfer of the liquor license for GMRC Inc., doing businesses for Guevara, to Guevara Inc., doing business as Casa Guevara Family Mexican Restaurant, subject to approval of the special permit application currently before the planning board for 621 North Main Street, and subject to further discussion regarding the availability of the outside deck for service and entertainment.
I'll second that.
That motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Could I just mention one thing?
Certainly.
Just to clarify the motion, if I could. The special permit is not before your planning board yet, okay? So I just want to be clear with the town council.
A vote to go in front of.
Yeah, we have not filed.
Special permit being filed. Okay, sorry. And I do have a question for, for attorney. Would this be too vague for your clients? I know it's hard, it's hard to put you on the spot, but I.
No, I appreciate that, but, you know.
I want to be fair between both of us.
Right. You know, obviously, as the advocate for my client, as the council understands.
You want it all.
I would like to, to see the council vote the broadest possible approval that they're comfortable with, because that sends, I think, a message from the council to the planning board that you feel that it's okay. Now, they may not agree with you, I appreciate that, and that may impact whether we go forward or not, ultimately. But, you know, if it's the opinion of the council that they would like us here in, in East Long Meadow, then I would urge you to be as broad as you're comfortable with.
Thank you. Further discussion on Mr. Henry's motion?
Or amendments.
And/or amendments.
I thought it was, through the chair, I thought it was, it was satisfactorily broad enough, and I think the message that were given to the petitioners are that, you know, we are, we're fine with them coming in and not having to worry to go through that special permit process and then have to come back and worry that the council might not be giving the liquor license. Liquor license is a core piece of this operation, obviously. So, plus it affords us, you know, the opportunity to tweak the actual license when it comes back, if the public comment has issue about decibels of noise or comments about outdoor drinking and so forth. But I, I think, you drafted it pretty well, Pat.
Just one question. So, prior to going back to the planning board, then, would this, is this public hearing going to remain open?
No.
No.
It will be closed?
Certainly.
Go to the planning board?
Yep.
Second public hearing, and then we, we can discuss the licensing and the pertinent information from the planning board at that time, correct? Okay.
Through the chair, that would come back to the licensing authority first, and then come back to the council.
Yes.
Through the chair again. I mean, I remember years ago, when, I don't know, Maryland was on either, that we ended up having a disconnect with the Board of Selectmen, what they gave, and our special permit from the planning board side said, and, you know, really specific on entertainment, really specific on this, and then the Board of Selectmen was much broader, so you had this disconnect. I think it's very clear that we're, the council wants to listen to what the public and the planning board have to say on the special permit, and then we have reserved the right to make appropriate modifications based on that public input as well.
But that we have approved it in, in principle.
In principle, yeah.
Most important.
Which is, yeah, because, you know, if I represented them, I'd be a little bit concerned that, you know, walking out of here and not being clear whether the liquor license is a, is, is, you know, the council supports having this business in town or not.
Madam Chair, could I hear the motion when, last time? Thank you.
I move to approve the transfer of the liquor license for GMRC Inc., doing business as Guevara, to Guevara Inc., doing business as Casa Guevara Family Mexican Restaurant, subject to approval of the special permit application shortly to be filed before the planning board for 621 North Main Street, and subject to the planning board's recommendations with respect to service and entertainment on the deck.
I have a question through the chair. So are you signing off or not signing off for forwarding to the ABCC? Or, because Counselor Kane.
I believe we're signing off.
If we're, we're signing off.
Okay, all right.
Yes. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Okay, continuing to orders of the day, we have.
Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome. Left with everything.
Thank you.
We have an approval of change of manager for Mess LLC, doing business as Bentley's Bistro, to Michael Garcia.
I just hope we won't lose him.
And with us tonight is Mr. Garcia.
For point of information.
Yes.
Back when Mess LLC first came in the business, I was off the planning board for over a year, and I was hired by them strictly for the special permit, and I have not represented them at all since. So I, I don't feel there's any conflict on my part, but I just wondered, let me put that on the, on the table.
Thank you. Okay. So this is simply a change in, in manager? I will note that, by my recollection, this is at least the third change in manager that's come before us in the last 18 months to two years or so. And is the attorney or the owner of Bentley's here this evening?
Yeah, yes.
It's just, it's a curious question. It seems like it's a revolving door of managers.
Well, we're putting an end to that now. We had an issue with the last one.
Yeah. Can you please forward Mr. Santinello and just identify yourself?
Joseph Garcia.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So, yes, we've had an, had an issue with the last manager. Michael's going to go in place. We don't perceive, we don't see any changes coming forward after this.
Okay.
But you are correct.
Yes. Any questions from the council at this time, that we think is in, in place otherwise?
Everything was in order? Through the chair. I saw everything in order. I have a concern, it doesn't have anything to do with the change of manager, but I know when you went for your special permit, one of the things the neighbors wanted was the fence, stockade fence in the back. I noticed a tree came through it, and a couple of the neighbors called me and said, can you just remind them that the fence has got to go back up when the spring comes? I understand, like I said, I just wanted to bring it up. I told them I would, so.
And we contacted the landlord a number of times, but yes, we will get that correct.
Okay. Hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the change of manager for Bentley's.
So I move to approve the change of manager application for Mess LLC DBA Bentley's Bistro to Michael Garcia.
Second?
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that motion passes unanimously. And, I'm sorry, one, 601 abstention. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, second licensing matter is the approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Mark's Episcopal Church for March the 7th, 2020, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. for a community dinner slash fundraiser. This is, is in your packet as well, and all information is in order? Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain that motion.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for St. Mark's Episcopal Church for March 7th, 2020, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. for community dinner and fundraiser.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that license approval passes. And then finally, the approval of a one-day liquor license for the East Long Meadows Skilled Nursing Center for March 18, 2020, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. for the grand opening of their new facility.
It looks like you read the motion, so I'll second it. We'll expedite.
Any ques, yes.
The applicant may be here to.
I'm sorry. Okay, yes, please, come forward, come on up.
I'm the executive director at East Long Meadows Skilled, so if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
We're excited for you. Looks like a beautiful piece of property.
Oh, yes, it's gorgeous inside. We're excited to get everybody in there to take a look at it, so.
Good.
The 18th. Please RSVP. We can hold up to 300, I believe. We already have 125 people who have RSVPs.
So is the inside all set? Everything's all done?
It's ready to go. We've had our first state survey come through last week. It's a process three surveys, so they're every two, two and a half weeks. So we're waiting for our life safety part of the actual building. It was engineering last week, it's life safety next, and then the general survey for the overall building. So we're hoping for first week in April for a move for all of our residents.
Very nice.
Okay.
You need to vote.
So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We're looking forward to that grand opening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It's a Wednesday. It's a party night.
I'll try. My brain's a little fried, but we already did the communications.
Okay, under financial matters, we have the five-year contract between the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, the contractor, and a dual-stream designated community, and do we have, is Amy here?
Yes, she is.
We're here. Do you want to come up here?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Come on up.
I signed this contract already. It's just before you, because it's a five-year term?
Correct.
So all I'm looking for is the approval to go off the five versus three?
Yes.
And Amy and, and.
Liz.
Thank you, Liz. I'll be all right. Are happy to be here to answer any specific questions you may have on the issue. Thank you both very much.
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
I have a question. Waste Management is the company that, that's dealing with the facility. Are they in conjunction with the Department of Environmental Protection? Are they just licensed by the DEP?
No, so DEP, this is the only state-run.
Correct. The dual stream.
Yeah, okay. So this is the only facility that the EP still runs, the state, that's dual stream. They contract with a waste provider to run the facility. So back six, probably a year ago, they put out an RFP, all the trash haulers bid on the process of what it would cost, Waste Management was selected. So now our contracts have to be with.
You know, usually it's, you have a competitive bid, a bunch of them are bidding each-
Yeah, so basically, the Murph Advisory Board did all that competitive bidding process for us and then handed us what Waste Management had, that this is the best option we had on the table.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
With regards to the length of the contract, with all the changes that are going on with our recycling, well, I call it the industry, is a five-year contract going to be better for the town or would the standard three-year that we had before suffice?
That's not an option in this case. So what would be better or not is kind of irrelevant at this point, but even if the market gets better, there is the annual market value rate that will go into effect. So right now, the annual market rate that, for our type of community that does dual stream is twenty-one dollars approximately, well, twenty-two eighty-one. So our total cost per ton, if that were to stay exactly the same, is seventy dollars and sixty-nine cents, whereas in the contract, this is ninety-three fifty. If that gets better, if the recycling market gets better, our annual market value is going to increase, which is going to decrease the cost per ton.
Okay. Thanks.
So it kind of answers your question.
Thank you.
Mary. Hi, Amy. Why not glass? I mean, what's the issue with glass?
Well, we, there are, we have been looking at the options, well, D E P, Liz and myself, for glass. Glass is really heavy and so it's going, it would, in fact, it would be in our best interest to remove it from the stream because it does affect our tonnage. But right now, there's no glass processors. There's a nice one on the cave that stands as like this, like mark, this protege of what could be done, but right now, there's no one in our area doing this. If we were to also then separate glass, we would then have to have another contract with someone to come and collect that glass separately.
So we lighten the load for recycling, but we heavy our, we make the trash piece heavier because the glass is nowadays. Yeah. 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 So Amy, for clarification, then the glass would be going in with the rubbish? Yeah. The contract?
No, we're still going to recycle the glass like we still are, however, they're going to separate it at the facility.
Oh, okay, I didn't understand that. Please, I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that makes me feel a little bit better.
So we have the ability to remove it, but we can send it and it's a more, it's more effective.
So through the chair, with regards to the residents, actions or inactions, nothing changes. They need to do anything different?
They are, there's two new things they are taking. Now they're taking plastic clear cups and plastic egg carton, clear egg carton containers and they do not want shredded paper anymore, but I talked to someone in the D P and they said it's fine because not, not a lot of residents throw that or recycle that anyway, so it would be okay.
And any, those changes will be advertised and educated upon once we know this is the right of will.
Second question. I hear this almost on a weekly basis, is there any opportunity to do anything different with our trash cans?
With our trash cans? So no, yes, you're really funny. I haven't, we haven't gotten any complaints in our office about the trash cans besides-
I've heard it on a weekly basis and it's just, why aren't we doing what this town does or that town does and they're bigger and they're smaller, we have to pay money for the extra bags and I don't know if we're going with the new company, if there's an option to do anything different.
There's not, there's not an option and it's not fiscally responsible for us to make any other decisions, honestly. If you look at the, the market for trash disposal, not only paying for it to be picked up, but we're also increasing, I have the numbers here, we are increasing the tonnage. Last year, we paid seventy-six dollars a ton, this year we're paying eighty and it's only getting worse. The, what we're paying for trash is, is remarkable. By, by enforcing our trash standards, we've saved three percent per year. If you look historically over before we started the enforcement in twenty nineteen, it was going up three percent every year. So if you take the three percent, it was going up over the past three years and then add the extra cost, I mean, it, it would be, our residents really wouldn't want us to do that. So right now, it's the most equitable way, right? So we, the town provides these thirty, what, thirty-five? Thirty-five gallon barrels and then if you need more trash, you, you buy the bags. It's still available, it's still an option, but if you don't, then everyone's getting the same thing for the taxes that they're paying without needing to unnecessarily increase the taxes to pay for the trash disposal for the people who don't need it. So I'm sorry, have them call me, I'm happy to walk you through.
Yes, I will.
And I'll show them the numbers, if they don't want it, they really, they really don't want it. And if you look, for years and years, I'm sure you guys have heard about, oh, we should be single stream, we should be single stream. Everything will be so much easier if we were like Springfield and we could put everything in one. And if you look at these prices now, we're one of the few communities that are in the situation where we're not paying a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton to dispose of our, our recycling. That's because we've had excellent guidance by people like Arlo Miller from Long Meadow and Liz telling us, that's not where you want to go, that's not where you want to go. And their, their rebate's even significantly different. So on top of paying a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton if we were a single stream community, we're also not getting the rebates. They're only getting twelve dollars a rebate, twelve dollars a ton. So there are things I think the residents believe are like convenient and good for them, that when they can, if they come in, I'll talk with them, Liz will probably do a much better job of talking to them, but they will see that it's not in their best interest.
How do you really feel?
I'm just shocked because I haven't heard anything more about the barrels since like the first couple of weeks.
I have a question. Do you think they'll come out with a self-propelled barrel at some point?
Throw itself down to the curb.
He's asking now because he's got a bad arm.
Well, there, there are some small and light for you. Not slurping.
So through the chair, I just have one question for a point of reference. Why did they decide that they didn't want shredded paper? I, papers, paper, when you process it-
Right, well, I think some people just put it in their recycling bin, not in a paper bag, so when it gets to the recycling facility, it just flies everywhere.
Okay.
Makes a mess.
Just for point of reference, I just, I couldn't understand, paper seems to be paper to me.
And some people put it in a plastic bag and that really upset them.
Yes, that's, that's bad.
That's the worst case.
Right. No plastic bags in recycling.
Really, I, I, there's been a lot of talk about this new recycling contract and really, East Long Meadow is in an excellent position to, to move forward with this. It's not ideal, normally it's been a revenue source, now it's going to be a cost, but with the increase in recycling programs that we've initiated over the last two years, the trash revolving account is able to take almost fifty percent of this right off the top. So it's not even going to show at the general fund. And then the money we've been saving on the trash reduction of the three percent over the last three years is going to also, it's going to mitigate what we would have been spending on trash disposal anyways. So really, East Long Meadow is, out of the communities I've, I've talked with and maybe Liz talked with, we're in good shape.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
And your enthusiasm for Robert.
I had no enthusiasm for Robert before this.
This is the East Long Meadow trash talking. Amy's very good. This is Liz. Thank you so much.
If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve that the town enter into recycling and trash contracts up to five years in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve B.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you have a question?
Discussion. Do we have to specifically authorize Mary for that in view of her year? She thinks so.
She, Mary thinks so?
I, I do think so.
Okay, so it should say authorize the manager to enter into recycling and trash contracts up to five years in accordance with MGL, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve B.
So we've got an amended?
No, it's, I'm just amended.
Amended.
Yep.
Amended motion.
All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
I know where you're going. Yeah.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
All right, we are moving to item B two and this is our annual joint meeting of the town council on school committee for our charter, Article six, section one regarding the annual budget process. So, Mr. Thompson, do you want to open your meeting?
We are actually not posted for this evening and we will not be deliberating, so not necessarily to open. Thank you for the offer though. And we forgot to post. We'll go with the first.
Okay, so-
It's the energy that the-
They're tough to follow. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We don't, as Mr. Thompson just began to intimate, have a formal presentation, but always are happy to sit down and begin the discussion of the budget development. We would like to touch upon, if we may, three key areas. One, a very large thank you to the council, because the last two years during this process, I think we've strengthened the East Long Meadows Public Schools in some really incredible ways. And I think all of you know that our goals in the last two budget development processes have really revolved around strengthening our social and emotional support and how we integrate that with the academic instruction that we provide in all the schools. And through all of your support and hard work, all of the school committee's support and hard work, and really probably many other departments that might be too numerous to list at the moment, I think we've accomplished that. We're seeing now a social-emotional program that runs pre-K to twelve. We're providing social-emotional special education teachers who not only are a resource for our staff, but probably more importantly, they become a real support base for certain students throughout all our grade levels and that's a tribute to everyone's hard work. So wanted to thank you for that. Also want to touch upon a pretty incredible effort that again, came through the support of both bodies, but I want to do another shout-out. I think that our town manager was giving a shout-out to Mr. Quimby in the I T department and last year's budget allowed us to really bring into fruition the hard work and planning of six years between the East Long Meadows Public Schools and the East Long Meadows I T Department and we now have a one-to-one program utilizing Chromebooks that touches students grade two through grade twelve. And that's over twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred computers, twenty-six hundred computers that were distributed between the last week of August and probably the third week of September. And not only is that just a mammoth event, so I really want to pay a public, a public thank you to the I T department. But it's also allowed us to take some of the things we're talking about in social-emotional, academic, and really with the software that's on these computers, start to personalize and really differentiate instruction as we get better because our professional development is centered on this. And that's a tribute to everyone's hard work, so that was the, the first point. Second point was, we wanted to talk about and begin the discussions, first, sort of this year's budget, where we are, and then how that may impact going into next year's budget. Something that I know the town manager is now aware of, because we've had an opportunity to discuss preliminary budget elements and certainly some of you may be aware of, over the last few months, we've been dealing with somewhat of a fiscal challenge, if you will. We've had some unanticipated and significant special education costs that have come to our attention through the I P process, through different agencies such as Department of Children and Families, where we've now encountered a pretty significant amount of unanticipated special education costs. We're working through it, we're looking at every aspect of our budget and our expenses, but we would like to at a later date probably come back and discuss some of that because it will have impact as we go forward into the next fiscal year. And our goals remain very similar, this is the third item, to the last two years. We have some really great things in place and it's looking to continue to strengthen those, those items that are already in place. I don't want to steal the entire show, so certainly open to any comments or thoughts or questions as we discuss.
I, to just put a few numbers to what Gordon just said, we're talking about some extensive out-of-district placements this year, unforeseen, and we're looking at over half a million dollars that we weren't planning on. There are years that there are extenuating circumstances, a hundred thousand or so. This year, we're, as I said, over five hundred thousand in unexpected costs. So that is something that is real and is occurring. We're looking at our budget to see where we can find some funds to perhaps make up some of that. We are struggling with the potential of making up a half a million dollars and so wondering, and not for tonight necessarily, but if there's an opportunity to discuss the potential to come back to this council for the potential for a free cash transfer to alleviate some of those unexpected costs. I know other departments have done it, as long as I've been on the board twelve years now, we haven't asked for one. Bill, fifteen years have we asked for?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
So thirteen years. With that, though, the five hundred thousand which we have to pay, that, that's a cost that we have to incur, that will also roll into next year. So that puts us into another situation in terms of level services. We've calculated level services already for next year. We're looking at paying three point nine one percent?
Yes, that's-
With a seventy-two percent reimbursement on circuit breaker? Is that our number?
Yes, although I prefer to use a seventy percent, but we-
But just so, we're trying to get to what we're actually working with, so you have some advantage, notice of what we're working with. We also have initiatives that we're interested in, in moving the district forward too. So with that three point nine one percent already baked into level services, and as I said, that includes that additional cost for this year. And, and keep in mind, if we don't do a free cash transfer, then we're going to have to deplete some other resources that we already anticipated spending on other things, so that will put us in a deficit for next year already. So it's kind of a domino effect to that. We just wanted to lay those few things out with, for you tonight, not looking for any sort of action, but potentially we'd like to come back and discuss a free cash transfer in the future.
I have a question, Greg.
Sure.
The half million dollar deficit, is it attributable, attributed to students currently in our district whose needs rose to a level of outside placement or new students moving in?
So it's a combination of both. To put more detail to that, as you know, Kathy, we usually have a number of safeguards in the budget around potential out-of-district placements or programmatic changes. To go back to the two thousand and seven request, which was something we just recently researched as we're looking at utilizing all areas of our budget, it's really interesting, they're, they're very similar. So in the months of November, December, and January, we had some programmatic changes with current students who are in out-of-district placements. And they were significant programmatic changes and they were more than we usually absorb. I would say on average, we probably have somewhere between, say, four to six programmatic changes that have decent cost to them. This year, we were dealing with closer to eight or nine that had really decent cost attached to them. Then we had in January alone, three out-of-district placements where, and it's not because an outside agency got involved, but it becomes more complicated when an outside agency gets involved, such as Department of Children and Families. Those were all out-of-district placements. And so all of that combined over the last three months has certainly given us pause and put us into a different way, we're looking at our budget and certainly as we discuss the budget development process, how we discuss all of this with you.
Do you think you will at some point get relief through circuit breaker funds for these situations?
There's a good chance.
Or we realize it would be a half a million?
We will be putting in, yeah, it won't be a half a million. We, that'd be nice.
Sorry, I don't need to talk.
It's true.
No, but I mean, I understand it.
Pam keeps me grounded.
I'm reminded, it is, it is a large number and we are looking at everything. We are only processing essential purchase orders, so I'm not the favorite person in the district right now, when I had to come to, you know, Gordon and the school committee, but we need to do what we need to do. Gordon and the school committee, but we need to do what we need to do. So we are looking at all of our purchases, all the purchase orders that are already out there, all of our revolving accounts, all of our grants, which includes circuit breaker reimbursement. When we talk about these numbers, they are big numbers. We do get IDEA grant, which is about $790,000. The bulk of that goes to tuitions. We get circuit breaker reimbursement, $980,000. That all goes to tuitions. We then have 1.5 million in our operating budget, tuitions. So, you know, we look at all of that and then we plan accordingly, but this has not happened before, since I've been here, certainly since Gordon. It was kind of nice to know that it did happen in the past. And we do talk about special education, and it's...
It's the target you can never...
That's correct. So, fine.
Kathy, I think you know also that circuit breaker reimbursement, Pam, is not reimbursed until next year.
Oh, yes. I know that.
So that deficit this year, for everyone's understanding, is, it's a real deficit now that we won't see the potential for reimbursement from the state until next year. We would hope for additional circuit breaker funding next year because of the additional cost, but that's also subject to that percentage, which is a moving target as well. So the 500 is real this year and will be real next year. We will have some relief towards it next year, but not this year, certainly.
And to answer your question, there is, it is possible that we could get what they call extraordinary relief through circuit breaker. Last year, we did receive about $51,000, I believe. We don't find that out until the end of April, if it comes, and then we got to think at the beginning of May, which was great, but we aren't going to know that. So it's not part of...
And you can't plan.
No, I can't.
And as part of the planning process now, as we talked and discussed, we're looking severely, or at some, I don't want to call them cuts right now because business is still happening in education, but they're, the money has to come from somewhere, so we're going to directly impact education for kids this year because of that deficit that we're running. And so that's what we're trying to address, and we won't know about the extenuating relief until we get closer to the end of the school year. And by then, we've lost those services already. So we're kind of in a pickle in terms of timing as well to not impact the student population as a whole because of these extenuating circumstances.
Through the chair. Quick question for you, Gordon, actually, for anyone that wants to answer. Out of district, so you're talking about someone that lives in town that we have to send to another facility because of the specialized training or whatever.
Specialized.
Special education.
Special education, exactly. Just wanted to clarify that. I know you guys probably all know it, but there are some people out there that just...
Thank you.
It may be helpful, because we throw a lot of things around in education, circuit breaker, although it sounds like you're dealing with an electrical panel.
Electric.
Really is...
It's still a shock.
Thank you. It is a reimbursement program that the state put together to handle and help districts with the cost of special education. However, the key, and you're hearing it as people throw out percentages, is that there's a threshold cost that you have to spend before you can even ask to be reimbursed. That's somewhere around $45,000.
$45,900.
And then you put in, really, each individual case into their formula. And so generally, Dr. Wells, our Director of Student Support Services, may be entering 100 different cases. However, we may only get reimbursement on 50. That's what we received last year. And of the 50, you're getting potentially 75% of what you spend above the $45,000. The way the regulation reads is that it's up to 75%. So when people throw around numbers such as 72%, 70%, it varies. Whatever the state decides to appropriate and what the percentage is going to be is what districts will receive.
And so the estimated circuit breaker at the beginning of the year, they might say it's 68 to 70%, which is what me, as a business manager, is more comfortable to use the lower percentage because the 75 is not guaranteed. However, I did do some history, as the school committee asked me to do, and we just presented it last night, on the circuit breaker. And since 2013, we have received usually, but somewhere between 72 to 75%. So again, we're utilizing that figure when we're talking about these numbers and trying to absorb that cost and to plan accordingly for next year.
And so to use Pam's numbers to take that one step further, so you understand in full disclosure, and it's on our school committee meeting anyway, we've had full discussion about this, with Pam using that 68% number versus the 72 that we've historically, her conservative number, which has always been good for us in the past, we're over 4% as an up, as a level services. So keep that in mind. We went a little more aggressive on what we assume we're going to receive from circuit breaker this year versus last year. We're not using the conservative 68%, we're using the 72%, right? Or was it 72?
72.
Because we feel pretty comfortable about that, but understand that if the state then comes back at 68, we're a little bit shorter. So in full disclosure, that 4% scared us as a school committee, so I know how the council will look at it. We've been here before, we know the average percentages that we're looking at. To start out of the gate at over 4% is a high bar. The 3.9 is still pretty high, but that's where we're at because of the 72% assumption.
But I think one of the things we've discussed as a school committee, too, is the fact that, and with obviously Pam and Gordon, that we also don't want the work of East Long Meadow Public Schools to stop because of these extenuating circumstances. So yes, we might be at 4% for level services going into the next fiscal year. However, we still have initiatives, and we still have educators and students that we need to work in service of. And we still feel like, when we get into these conversations, that we need to put forth those initiatives so that we're continuing to provide high-quality educational experiences for the students because they deserve those, bar none, irregardless or regardless of these extenuating circumstances that are facing our district currently.
You all have said you're covering, turning over every stone, every possibility. I assume that there's a commonality in these issues that would cause you to think that you could bring it in?
Bring it in-house?
That's, I mean, that's always something that's decided through the IEP process.
Only if there's commonality.
But it's tough to do in the middle of a year. Well, and those that have out of district are specialized for things that we don't offer, we don't have the ability to service them.
Understood, but if they were all sane, you might create that.
Right. It would be a discussion over and over again.
Correct. So you're really talking two different things, I think. You're talking about developing a program such as the social-emotional program that we've developed over the last few years. Prior to me being here, the district noticed an increasing rate of students who are on the autism spectrum and began building a program that now runs also pre-K to 12. And so that does take time, but it's something certainly that we would look at. To answer the other question, which I think was part of your comprehensive question, in any IEP process, you can discuss if there are goals that are being met, and the team, which usually consists of educators, the parents, and if there's another facility in the conversation, then that group as well, they're going to look at the IEP goals and what are being met. And there are years that students come back to the district, certainly. I don't know if we would get all nine of the ones we're discussing now back, but that's certainly something we're looking at.
And the goal of the IEP process is typically to keep the student in the most, in the least restrictive environment. So if, the goal is always, when educators are around the table alongside the family and the administrators, is to keep the child amongst their peers, receiving services within district. So that's ultimately not the goal of the IEP process. So in these extenuating circumstances, there must be evidence to show that we should, considering what has happened.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair. One more question.
Sure.
Obviously, we all read the paper. I saw an article, I don't know, three, four, or five weeks ago, where Governor Baker was looking to change a formula or something which would give districts more money.
It's the Student Opportunity Act. Gordon didn't help.
Well, first off, did they actually do it? A lot of times you see it, but...
The legislation was passed. There is a new formula, but it's based a lot on demographics.
It's also, it's also subject to appropriation.
Yeah.
And so the Student Opportunity Act that did pass was looking at something that really has been studied probably for the last five years, as they looked at the foundation budget, which is how they determine what Chapter 78 will come to a town. And the current one that we were using prior to this act passing was set in 1993. And so what they've seen in that timeframe since then is that costs around special education have significantly increased, and other educational costs that were embedded at certain percentages in the foundation budget have increased far beyond what they had expected. And so they put together a commission to study this and make recommendations. Now, the governor and the legislature are starting to act on that, and that's where the Student Opportunity Act comes in. We were very excited to get into the discussion. We actually hosted Senator Lesser and another senator who were sponsoring a similar bill. It wasn't necessarily at that time called the Student Opportunity Act. We then invited school committee chairs, union presidents, and superintendents from around the area. Unfortunately, a lot of what is helping other districts is not necessarily helping Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Ludlow, Handen, Wilbraham, Agwam, and so forth. In there, they have to increase funding by $30 per pupil, and that's what we received.
The minimum.
That's what Long Meadow received. I believe that's what Ludlow received, which is very dissimilar to the increase we received in Chapter 70 last year, which was over $800,000.
$79,000.
So it's been an interesting fall into winter.
So don't always believe what you see in the paper.
It is, it is. In no way would it dismiss that it's a significant piece of legislation because the foundation budget needed to be revised, and it will help a lot of municipalities. It's not the windfall that I think people are thinking that East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, and some of the LPVC districts will receive.
However... Oh, okay.
It's also going to take seven to 10 years to fully implement, because they're still looking at funding sources. None of the funding sources were guaranteed in this legislation.
Looking at funding sources.
Yeah. No, that's what it is.
Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to write IEPs where the funding source is not guaranteed.
That's right.
What I did want to add, though, we talked about circuit breaker a little bit. There was a piece in the Student Opportunity Act, which I'm going to be going to a meeting on it next week, that we talked about special needs. There's the other component, not the tuitions, but the special needs transportation. I believe ours is about $800,000. It's another big number, but it's a real number. And they're somehow, and I don't have the answers yet, hopefully I can give you more information maybe next month, they're working, they're somehow going to try to work these expenses into that formula for the circuit breaker reimbursement. I don't know how much that might be. I certainly am hoping it's going to be a significant amount, but that is promising, you know, and something positive for our district.
And that's both in-district special education transportation and out-of-district special education transportation. So that is, thank you, that's a huge positive.
I do want to say one thing before we close out, that even though we're coming here somewhat in a negative vibe about the budget, we had a spectacular presentation last night from our leadership team. Our students are really achieving. They're doing extremely well. They had very clear test results, diagnostic results, really overwhelmed the school committee about how well our students are doing pre-K through 12. So even though you hear our struggles here, believe me, every one of our students is being, is being educated in the best possible way.
My question was just, I thought there was another section of this where we'd be talking about next year's budget.
Yes. We're still crunching the numbers.
That we didn't lose that.
We'll be back. We're still crunching the numbers.
Do we have time frames that we're looking at for submissions?
Well, yes.
Forms or...
Yes.
We had discussed yesterday that I think Mary needs numbers probably...
Sometime during the month.
Early March.
Maybe most of our...
We'll be working on this since December, so we'd be glad to pass the numbers on.
Add it to my perfect storm.
And then we'll come back again sometime to talk about it? Is that the plan?
I would say.
And that potential for a free cash transfer, maybe we can all do some research and potentially put that on a future agenda? If that's something that we decide we might need?
Another future agenda, we're talking about, you know, high school. You might as well just keep us on the agenda.
If you have a couple hours, I could run the presentation we had last night.
We're meeting at that time.
Lot more positive message. That's where we started, though, thanking all of you and where we are.
Greg, you spoke about, before we talked about your struggles, you wanted to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that you hope to keep alive for next year.
Just in terms of not only level services, but we've discussed some potentials for growing the district in better ways. So we haven't fully vetted all of the recommendations. As you've been through the process before, the leadership team will come forward with multiple recommendations. Typically, we whittle that down a little bit, so we're still in that process. My point was that even at the 3.9%, we are hoping we're not done there. I know it's a big nut to crack, but I, my intention is just to say there are more things that we'd like to discuss as well after that, so.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a two-minute?
Please.
I want to refill my water.
Okay, we're going to take a...
Five.
I was going for three, but people say five. Try to go on the short side of five, please. Three cents. Thank you. Sarah, you can still come to the table. Okay, we are moving on now to financial matters B3, the quarterly FY '20 budget report from our finance director, Sarah Minard.
So in front of you, you have the report. The very first page is a summary of the year-to-date budget report, summary by department, so it includes the school department and all of our other departments. You will see that this report is through December 31st, which is 50% of the year. You will see that the percentage used is 82.2% of the year, but as I've discussed at previous meetings, the school department encumbers the full amount of their regular salaries. So if you look at that particular line, you see the 97%. So that is why the overall percentage is so high, but that does not mean that the whole, our entire budget is actually that far spent. I do have a couple of departments that are either in a deficit or that I am projecting a deficit. I will mention them right now, and then we can go into further detail. As I've mentioned at the previous meeting, the town council budget, the town manager budget, legal services, snow and ice, the waste collection disposal, workers' compensation, and the liability insurance. I do also have five accounts that I'm keeping an eye on, that they might have an issue, but at this point, they don't actually. But looking ahead and seeing how things work out, I am keeping an eye on the town council clerk budget, the police department, the fire department, the dispatch department, and the health department. The three public safety departments that I mentioned, overtime is something that we watch closely, and those are, the last discussions that I had with both chiefs were that we're watching them. Typically, we get a lot of volume in the springtime, so we are just staying very on top of those. At the moment, we're not in a deficit, but we just keep an eye closely on those. The total projected deficit as of December 31st is approximately $121,000. In those departments that I listed, we do have $112,000 in the reserve fund that essentially could offset that, but then, as I've said, there's still a deficit there. Now, maybe some of the other departments will be able to offset that. I'll know a little bit more after our third quarter to see where we are, but I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. A question that might come up, especially considering the discussion that was just had about the school department, is our free cash number. Our free cash was certified at $1,688,773. To date, we have only approved for $28,152.83 to come out of that, and that was for the emergency capital for the truck 72 engine repair. And so we currently have a free cash balance of $1,660,620.17. Our stabilization fund, which I know is frequently a question that gets asked, is currently at just over $3 million.
Sarah, just a real quick question. I heard you specifically say one of the budget items you're looking at is town council.
Yes.
You mean us, or do you mean...
Yes.
Services at 100, because I'm looking at 64%.
I'm, I'm meaning both, but the town council comment was you guys?
Yes.
So if we go into the next...
64%.
If we go into the next page, which has more of the detail, the concern is the town manager search was an unbudgeted item for $9,200, so that is why I am projecting that the town council department's budget will be overspent. And this is something that we've spoken about at the first quarter and that we know that we are hoping to be able to either use reserve fund, yes, reserve fund, or to have surplus in another department to cover it. And then in the town manager's budget, that one, I'm also projecting a deficit of close to $10,000, and that's due to the salaries. Are there any questions on those two departments before I move on? Okay. Moving on, the accounting department is under the 50% mark. The assessors department, when you look at the year-to-date expended, they are well under the 50% mark, but when you look at the total used, including the encumbrance, which is your far-right column, you'll see it says 58.8%, but that's because we have an encumbrance for the real estate and personal property inspection valuation services. We budget, we put in a blanket encumbrance in for the whole amount. So that's why I'm not worried about this department at that time, but if you look at the far-right column, it's above the 50%. The treasure collectors department is underneath the 50, so I'm not worried. The legal services is currently in a deficit of $30,782, and that, as you're well aware, we've had a lot of legal expenses this year and unexpected cases. So that deficit's only going to grow, depending on how much else we need to use that area. Human resources is well below. We have had, the director position has only been filled with a person not full-time, so that has helped a lot for that department, as well as another position that has not been fully filled. Information technology, that department, if you look at the percentage used year-to-date expended or even at the, including the encumbrances, you'll see that it's at over 60%. The reason with this department is that a lot of the contracts that they do are an annual contract, and most of those are due in the first half of the year. So that's why it looks higher than the 50%, but at this time, I am not worried about this department at going over. Next, you have the clerks' budget. The clerks' budget is going to be tight this year. Right now, it is currently fine, but they had some unexpected expenses with general code and a couple of other items, so we just want to keep a close eye on it. And Jeannie, I know, is working hard to keep that budget within the positive. The elections right now has not had anything spent as of December 31st. We'll know more about this as we continue, whether or not we have preliminary. We budgeted as if we were having one, so we budgeted for three, but if we wind up only having two elections, then that department will have a surplus to be able to contribute to some of the deficits that we were speaking about. The planning department is well within where they should be. The police department, if you look, right now, they look fine, but as I mentioned, the police chief had spoken to Mary and myself about just keeping an eye on overtime. They have had some people out within their department, and so therefore have had to do some backfilling, which has caused an increase in overtime. So right now, they're still fine, but we will keep a close eye on it. And the fire department, if you also look at them, they are still within that 50%, and they just have had more calls, so they've been using their staff more. But at this time, I'm not worried. I'm just keeping a close eye on it. The building inspectors department is well within, and dispatch is the same reasoning as the police and the fire. School committee is exactly where they should be. It's a monthly stipend, so they're exactly where they should be. Highway department is well within the 50%, as is the building facilities department. The snow and ice is currently in a deficit as of December 31st of $26,000. If you recall, this is the only state allowable deficit, so we will keep an eye on this one to see whether we are able to fund it with the surplus, which is what we typically have done in the past, rather than having to do other means such as either free cash or raising it in the tax rate.
So through the chair.
Sure.
I just have a question on this.
Sure.
Is it normal that we keep this ridiculously low?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, we've had a winter that is like none other.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's been so warm, very little, and we're already over budget.
Yes.
So...
Yes. But the reason that you do that is so, while it is approved to have a deficit in the state, if you budget over and you don't use it all, the following year, you are prohibited from going into a deficit. So you...
I just...
I did not make the rule. I just have to follow the rule. So therefore, most municipalities keep that budget very low because they don't want to run into a situation like a couple of years ago, where it wound up being a crazy winter that they actually got to amortize it over three years. And we were one of the communities that did not have to do that, which we were very proud of.
Yeah.
So that's why, yes, we are keeping it low. I strongly encourage us to still keep it low, but knowing that we most likely will have an issue with that.
I mean, just by looking at this...
But that's also why we have that reserve fund.
By January 1st, we were probably already over budget with the one big storm that we had. I just, thank you.
And remember, some of this is also that they purchased the salt and whatnot ahead of time, so even at December 31st, even though we hadn't had many snowy events or ice events. Continuing on, the utilities department, right now, if you look at the year-to-date expended, next to that, I put the percentage, and you can see it's at 27%, but if you look in the far right, it's at 96.6%. And the reason being is that we encumber, based on the prior year's activity, we encumbered for the full 12 months. So planning that if we stick similar to last year, we'll actually have a surplus in that department, but if not, we do still have a little bit of wiggle room, so I'm not concerned about this department at the moment. The next is trash, and currently, I'm not worried about this. We also do a blanket for the full amount of the contract, and that's why the encumbrance column is so high for that one. The waste collection disposal department is currently in a deficit. You will notice, well, excuse me, let me back up. As of December 31st, it is not in a deficit, although with the encumbrance, it is looking like it will be a deficit. This is one that, based on the prior year activity, I do think we will use that full encumbrance and actually see that deficit. So that's why I have that on my deficit list. And therefore, for actually the fiscal '21 budget, we have increased that department because of how it's been running the past couple of years. Next is the health department. And again, I'm not worried here. They have a blanket PO for the landfill monitoring, and they also had that unexpected clean-and-lean that we wound up having to do. So this department head is monitoring her expenses closely and trying to make sure that it does not go into a deficit, but right now, it's still fine, but it is one of the departments that I'm watching closely. Then we have the council on aging, which is within the 50%. The veterans' benefits is also something I'm not worried about. We do a blanket PO based on the veterans and what they typically get every month, and we also pay for our veteran's person, his salary upfront in July. So that's why that first line is already at the 97%. Next is then the library. We do a blanket PO for the state book requirement, so again, it's not an area that I'm worried about. The recreation department is next, and well below the 50%. Next is the celebrations historical department, and most of their expenses, they incur in July because it's the Fourth of July parade and all of those kinds of events, so I'm not worried, even though it's a higher percentage than the 50%. If we look at the debt together, it is right on track to where it should be based on our amortization schedules, so I'm not worried there. The employee benefits, FICA, we are still well within the 50%. The workers' compensation, as I mentioned at the first quarter, is higher. That is due to the big adjustment we had in the previous year's audit due to our payroll and whatnot. We did get the results back, I believe, last week from this year's audit, so we are getting a premium refund. It's unfortunately only $12,200, so it's not enough to make that deficit go away, but it did help a little bit. Health insurance is right where it should be. We have blanket POs for what we're anticipating for individuals, as well as the health insurance, we pay one month in advance. So even though the rest of the report is really as of 12/31, that one's actually more of January 31st. Liability insurance is also an area that we have a deficit. We do have a blanket PO in there for the unemployment insurance, which may help with that deficit, so we're just keeping a really close eye on that. So far, the beginning half of the year, our unemployment insurance has been really low, which is great, and so hopefully, it continues that way for the rest of the year. And then the next item is the retirement, which we pay all in July, and the last item is the PVPC assessment, which again, we pay all in July. Are there any specific questions on those departments?
Yeah.
Through the chair. This was, this report was the only one that didn't have the percentages year-to-date somehow.
Yes.
I calculated them all.
That one is because it's the summary and it's straight out of munis for all of the departments, but all of the detail is behind it and has that percentage. Then, after the general fund, we have...
If I may, through the chair, I have additional question. I know this came up a while back with regards to our utilities expenditures, and our head of DPW came in and explained that there were some county billionaire, and I don't know if that's a question for you, to see where we stand with that.
It's on your agenda for executive session tonight, the settlement of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next page in your packet, based on comments from a previous meeting, it was asked to summarize what some of the abbreviations meant, so I tried to give a little table. If there's any abbreviations that I missed, please let me know. And then I gave a little bit of additional notes of just generally how to read it, that revenue is negative on these, and that's a good thing. So then, when you look at the water enterprise fund, I'm not worried at all. This is right on track. Our revenue is higher than it should be. The 50% is just over, it's 54%, and a lot of our expenses are below the 50%, and we do have a blanket purchase order for the Springfield water and sewer line, which is what we would expect. So I am not concerned at all at this point on the water enterprise fund, and it's the exact same situation with the sewer enterprise fund. It's also in great shape at this point in the year. And then moving on to the storm water, it's in excellent shape for this point of the year, as is LCAT. So all of our enterprise funds are right on track to where they should be, and they're all hovering right around the 50% mark, which is excellent. Last, we have the revolving funds. So we have the solid waste revolving fund, and that is also in a great place right now. Its revenue is at almost 60%, even though it's only 50% way through the year, and the expenses are at 6.89%. So that's in a great place. The balance in the total fund as of December 31st, which I did not put on the sheet, but I will going forward, it was a last-minute thought, is $258,000, yeah, $258,177.35. And then, the council on aging revolving fund is also in great shape at this point in the year, and its balance as of December 31st is $58,938.58. And then the last one is the health revolving fund, which we also know doesn't get a whole lot of activity, and that current balance is $1,065.75. So all three of these revolving funds are healthy and where they should be at this point during the year.
Through the chair. Just a general comment, and it's just the aesthetics of the look of the document. In the first column, it says 2020 original budget. That's really the money that is the spending limit for that account that we appropriated.
Okay.
So it's not really a budget, it's a spending limit.
You mean for the revolving funds?
Yes.
Yes, it's the limit, yes.
So I would suggest...
So would you prefer I change the title to say limit?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just one, Pioneer Valley Planning. They went up, what, 25 cents? I mean, how dare they?
I know.
That ruined the whole budget.
That's the expense that makes a break for us, you know?
Any questions for Sarah?
I just have another question. With regards to the ambulance fund?
Mm-hmm.
How are we doing with that in general?
Oh, we're doing excellent, actually. That department and budget is doing really, really well.
They're constantly going. I see them constant, in and out.
Yeah. Car...
I guess my question would be, are they meeting the expected revenue?
They are far exceeding the expected revenue.
Okay.
Far exceeding it, so...
Thank you for that, chief.
Would you like me, on the third quarter, to include another sheet for them?
I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be awesome. Thank you.
No problem. Wait one more second, I can tell you where they stood at December 31st.
Always nice to see what money's coming in.
Yeah. At December 31st, we had revenues of $370,346, and I think we have projected for the whole year too long, Greg.
I know, right now, we're $150,000 shy of reaching what I'd refer next year's projected budget, which includes the ambulance payment for this year and the ambulance payment for next year with what the town manager and I have discussed with the budget going forward. By the end of, by the middle of April, we should be at that point where we have next year's budget covered.
Yeah. We had budgeted for revenues of $221,000 for the ambulance fund, and as of today, what we've posted, we have received $467,012.21 in revenue, so we are doing phenomenal.
Good, thank you.
You say I'm drash in our way, we're quite patient to have passionate ones that took on the advance, I support. Our revenue will clear a million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Which will help offset the cost of...
That's incredible.
School department wants to make friends with you.
On your own.
Get your own ambulance.
Any other questions for Sarah? Very nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are moving to old business, a presentation, Mary, on the Westcom district proposed agreement, joining that dispatch center.
Yes. Erin Hastings is the executive director of Westcom. She's here with us tonight, Erin, if you don't mind coming up. And my three musketeer departments, the police chiefs and the IT director, and I meant, no, that was an affectionate term, not a disrespectful one. These three gentlemen have really vetted the process of the town's consideration for joining the Westcom Center, and I believe that if you have any specific questions on operations, the police and fire chief will be happy, and I'm sure Erin would be happy too, if you're still with us, Erin. And Ryan's been in charge of the technology aspect, and I've tried to manage the fiscal components. But what you have before you is the agreement, the original district agreement from 2017 that the town did sign on to back then, and I'm asking tonight that, after your consideration, that you execute a new signature page per Erin Hastings. Erin Hastings' request, that the, the existing agreement needs to be signed to reflect East Longmeadow's desire to join, and that signature will trigger Westcom's opportunity to file for the development and incentive grants. Please correct me or interject anytime you want. So that the transitional costs of East Longmeadow going to that dispatch center will be covered, but potentially up to three years with a decreasing percentage in years four and five. Subsequent to sending you the full agreement, which is that 25-page agreement from 2017, I had sent also a four-page synopsis that I, again, give Ryan credit for, because he offered to put it together. And so between the two of us, we, he, he did the bulk of the heavy lifting, and I did the editing, but we tried to set out the salient points for your consideration on the budget aspect. And I, I have mine here, and we can go through it if you want to do it that way, or I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I don't want to be tedious, because I'm sure you've all seen it.
Questions, Pat?
I looked at it. My only, my only question was, whose report is this? I wasn't sure where, where it was coming from, but now I know.
Oh, well, no, it was an internal document that...
It had, it had our logo on it.
No, you know, we've had so many meetings, we've been, the, the district has been kind enough to invite us to, kind enough to invite us to two of their board meetings in February, and maybe one in late January, where the conversation began about whether it was feasible for East Longmeadow, budgetarily speaking, and technologically speaking, and operationally speaking, to merge with Westcom. Our budget is $333,000 for dispatch, and that's without any benefits, without any OPEP considerations. So it's probably closer to 420 or 430 a year. Our level of service at Westcom will be at least doubled, if not tripled. Currently, the staff runs one dispatcher per shift, and Westcom operates with a minimum of two dispatchers per shift, again.
Yeah, we're actually up to five right now.
Okay, even better. So, the, the level of service is remarkably improved over what we can provide the citizens of East Longmeadow in our current site. And the state is encouraging the regionalization, as you're all well aware from years past. They want communities to merge. They're not going to allow any standalone PSAPs in the near future. So we're being, municipalities are being pushed in this direction. So actually, it's, it's actually a good push, because I think it's going to improve the level of service to the community, and it's going to save us, at a minimum, over a million dollars over a five-year period. So, all things considered, I highly recommend it for your consideration, and I have the support of these three department heads, and Erin has been wonderful in terms of providing us information and working hard, because our deadline or our, our goal date, if you will, was July 1st, so that we didn't have to get into another budget cycle for fiscal '21 for dispatch. And she's indicated that Westcom can accommodate that scheduling. However, it would be imperative that the agreement get signed sooner rather than later in order for them to do that, because other communities are starting to express an interest that, I think, as recently as a year or two ago, probably wanted to remain alone or stand alone if they could. So we don't want to get, we don't want someone else, I don't think there's anybody that's as progressed in terms of the technology and the operational analysis as East Longmeadow is, that could be ready to join Westcom by July 1st. Munson has recently joined, but I don't know the status of, of that town's operational readiness, if you will, but, because I'm only concerned about our own, frankly. And we're ready to go, and so...
Through the chair, can anybody explain what, what happened to the original one that we apparently signed, and then we waltzed on, or?
Well...
How did that?
We, this community signed on, and, and in fact, the agreement that I sent you has the signature page bearing the signatures of the parties that were in office at the time. Erin has indicated to me that there was a formal, or was it Hamden that formally filed?
I believe there was a formal withdrawal.
There was, on the part of East Longmeadow.
And it was prior to my hiring at Westcom, and I don't have the paperwork for that, and it was never passed on to me.
But that was formally done, so, okay. So it's not, it's not just hanging out there.
No, I believe it was in November of 17, 2017.
Well, frankly, I've looked for it too, and I can't find it either. I can't find an executed withdrawal form. We can do that, if we want to do that.
Our minutes should reflect that, though.
I'm sorry?
Our council minutes should reflect that. I'm, I'm certain it was in the fall of 2017.
Well, I didn't check the council minutes. I was looking through the shared drive.
To see an actual executed document.
Right, right.
That would have been just from the manager at that point.
Yeah.
And Kathy, thank you. My last point was that I did raise four questions last meeting, and they were all answered to my satisfaction. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Through the chair. I would just say, we signed that agreement in 2017, and predicated on the facts, and there's a lot more upside being three years out. So we're, we're not, there's a lot more to gain by signing this contract now. That'll enable a rec to be formed and grants to be applied for. And I just want to be clear on, on one piece. If we delayed the process, and this is time-sensitive, and we missed this opportunity, couldn't this put us back at least 18 months before?
Well, yes, because if, if Westcom cannot accommodate us for our lack of diligence in, in proceeding, there may well be another community that, you know, puts, puts their best efforts forward to jump in. And, you know, whether Westcom would accommodate us a year down the road, I don't know. I personally don't want to renege again. We haven't made a commitment, obviously, with your authority or vote to do so, but Springfield is looking to have a regional center also, but they're far from ready. We did, the chiefs and I met with the fire chief in Springfield in that, on that topic back in December. But that, that center is far down the road. But to your point, Counselor Kane, I think that would be our next best option if this one did not materialize.
So if you took that 18 months and you correlated into a financial ramification, during that 18 months, if we were out, it could cost us $2.1 million to the town?
Well, over a five-year period, it would cost over $2 million, yes. And in light of all the other budget matters we've heard and discussed tonight, this is a, I think, a prudent way. Now, I'm not happy about dissolving a department and the ramifications for employees in that department, but they will be, I'm told by Erin, that they'll at least be offered an opportunity to apply for positions at Westcom. And as Westcom grows and expands, if they can't be hired now, there's potential for the future, if they pass the, you know, the prerequisites and so forth, that, that district office, you know, wants in their dispatchers. But to me, I think it just makes a lot of sense to proceed now. They, they want us, or at least they've indicated that they want us. Our chiefs are happy. I think it makes fiscal sense to do so, and, and time is imperative.
Through the chair. Couple questions with regards to our share. I know it's based on population and call volume. With our call volume increasing exponentially with the new ambulance and all, how's that going to correlate? I think we were, what, 16 and a half or 17%?
Maybe 14?
We're 14, we're just under 15. 4.6, right, yeah.
That's, that's based on 911 calls coming into the center, right from 911. It's not numbers that we give them. So my, my calls are calls that were probably being handled at some point somewhere in the town, but we, it's, it's calls that have increased for the ambulance service and the fire department. Yeah, my, my department's nut calls have gone up, but the town's calls have, they've probably gone up a little bit, but those are the numbers that Erin has worked into our cost formula at this point.
So they've already been worked into it?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was one of my questions. My other question is, there's always a concern with regionalization. Someone is on a cell phone, they call for service. How do we know that the call gets directed to the right town, right location, that if someone calls up and says, "Oh, my God, I need an ambulance, I'm at 68 Maple Street," and hangs up, that it's actually going to be sent to East Longmeadow and not Longmeadow or Chicopee? I mean, and again, it's more for my knowledge, I think, than anything.
Up until about two years ago, 80% of your 911 calls were going, there were cell calls instead of landlines, and those went to State Police in Northampton. So 80% of your 911 calls originated to State Police Northampton, and then got transferred in. The technology has gotten better, so we take the Phase 2 wireless calls directly at Westcom. So as soon as, within five seconds of you dialing, or up to 10, between the five and 10, it pinpoints the phone, the location, and it maps it. So we get a picture on the map of where it is. We also have applied for a new program. It's called Rapid SOS, which is another mapping system, but it also gives you the history of the phone, calling 911, who owns it. If somebody's registered with Rapid SOS, it'll give their medical history just from the phone number.
So is there, through the chair, so is there any tracking of if service is sent to the wrong location, and is it, does it happen?
It does happen. There'll be southern parts of Longmeadow that actually will, will, a Phase 1 phone, which doesn't have an address attached to it, will end up in Enfield sometimes. But that's getting less and less every day. So, and there, there's text to 911 now, and we've applied for a trial period for video to 911, live-streamed video to 911. And the beauty of it is, in addition to what she's describing, you know, Longmeadow went over in December, and now they've got three months of practical experience, and they're going to have four more months before we go live, if we go live with them. So the glitches that occasionally occur is a matter of, you know, human interaction and mistakes get, they'll have an opportunity to, to create protocols if they don't have them already and address those. And we feel like we're kind of sliding in on the coattails of the other communities that took the lead first, and we're going to benefit, and they've told us that many times, the other chiefs from Longmeadow have vindicated that, you know, we're going to benefit from their experience, because they've, they've been the proverbial guinea pig that's been the first community in. So...
Question, just from a technology point of view. Obviously, we all know the new rules on using cell phones. So a lot of people perhaps might be programming their cell phones. So let's say mine is, I see a matter that needs police attention, and I say, "Call East Longmeadow Police," and I have the, what is it, 5440 is the number?
5440.
5440. Yep, which is, yeah, same thing.
Same thing.
So...
5446.
Yeah, that's okay. Worked out. So anyhow, so let's say I see a matter that needs police attention, and I just say, "Call East Longmeadow Police." I don't want to grab my phone and do it. Doesn't quite, let's say, a deer accident or something. Is this call going to the East Longmeadow Police Station, or is it going to the call center and so forth, if it's already pre-programmed?
So basically, and Ryan can step in and correct me if I'm wrong when I speak here, but you'll enter that 5440 number, will go into a tree prompt, and you'll have the option of, if it's an emergency, dial, hang up and dial 911. You get those all the time. If this is a routine, a routine complaint, then press 1, or whatever the number be. But that'll forward it to the call center for a, an officer to address.
And alarm people with house alarms and so forth, if, if, you know, there's buttons on it, medical emergency, you press something, and will that call, the East Longmeadow, will the, will the call, all the call centers for the alarm companies know not to call you guys, but to call?
They'll have to be educated. Well, the number they dial, again, will probably get to tree phone.
It'll forward right to the, to the communication center.
Okay.
That's how it operates now. So right now, if you say, "Call East Longmeadow Police," you're going to get that phone prompt right now if you dial 5440. The part that we're going to be redirecting is the part that would go to the current dispatchers there now. We're just going to send that to the call center. And we're going to do some tweaking to our, our prompts to help better direct calls, since there won't be somebody in the station full-time, possibly.
There are, there are numbers out there that alarm companies have, so that they actually call and don't get delayed with the tree prompt. So if it's a medical emergency, if it's a fire emergency or burger alarm, that number, right, Ryan, comes directly into dispatch.
Yeah, we have bypass numbers.
It's a, it's a bypass, yeah. They don't, so they don't hit the tree prompt, phone prompt. It'll go right to, either right now it's going to our dispatch, in the future it'll go right to Westcom's dispatch. So there's no...
Like elevator call buttons, you know, when you push the button, and you remember an emergency, and it says, you know, "Push zero, talk to an officer," it doesn't really help, and there's no buttons.
And will the police station be dark? In other words, are they going to be having, are we going to be losing some of our savings by having full-time officers getting time and a half to cover?
The numbers that we quoted for the overall savings over five years...
Factor that in.
...incorporate the cost of having a police officer on duty for 24 hours, and we want to continue talking about that, because I think, we, I, my preference would be to staff it for less than 24 hours. But I know the chief has a little bit of an issue with that, so that's still up for debate. But even at 24 hours, it's a savings of over a million over a five-year period.
Probably so, about 25 a year.
We did factor, to answer your question, yes, we figured in the residual cost.
Just to correct, it would be a civilian.
Not a police officer, I'm sorry, a civilian too. But so that the station was not dark and there was a response person available.
Could, could we have a visual of what that would, would mean, so you have a civilian just at the front desk in case a resident or, you know, motor stops in, drives by, just to ask a question?
Sure.
Would there be any function taking place with that individual sitting there?
So it'd be like an expanded greeter, so to speak. If they have the answer for the person without giving legal advice, they would direct them into where they have proper personnel to answer their question. If it requires an officer to come off the road, then that's what we would do. If, if it's just a question about looking for someone, then we would be able to have that staff direct them to the proper way to get a hold of the person.
So it wouldn't just be a person like me to sit at the desk to say, you know, you know, you take the information and then you transmit it to someone else. It has to have someone with knowledge.
Well, we'll train them. We'll, we'll, you know, the position will come with some kind of guidance to what we want you to do. And one of the worst things I want to do is send people in revolving door of government in and around and around and around. And that's the service that we try to maintain for the town of East Longmeadow. And that's what me and Mary will be discussing as far as we move forward, how we make sure we maintain that service.
Okay.
One of the things, I, you know, hopefully it'll still be the case, is for people a
little nervous doing transactions with people they don't know online, is it's encouraged to go to a local police station, and in their parking lot, do the transaction there. If that is not going to be the case anymore, because it's going to be dark, or it's still a place to citizens, if they don't know anyone, they, they don't, they want to feel comfortable buying on Craigslist or whatever, they could, can they still go to the parking lot and expect to have somebody observing?
Sure, the parking lot's still an option for people, but they got to understand, too, that the dispatcher now currently there will not, if something was to happen, would not run out the door and be the interceptor of any kind of problems. If they had a problem, they would step inside the vestibule and, and speak to her. It is monitored by cameras, though.
Who monitors it, chief? Is it the dispatcher?
Right now, we currently monitor it.
Is it also going to be monitored by the, by Chicopee, or no?
Door access to our cameras, yeah.
Yep. But they, funny you mention that, because I caught someone in the parking lot, which I never have done before, and it happened to somebody I know, and I said, "Hi, why are you?" And they were doing a transaction on the internet. They were saying, you know, some towns post it as a safe place, but it's just, people feel safe just going through the police station.
Exactly.
Question for Mary, through the chair. So would we, we be authorizing you tonight to enter the agreement, similar to our last scenario?
Well, yes and no, because I'm one of the signatures on the new signature page. But really, what you're being asked for is to execute a new signature page, pardon me, that I think is in your package. And it doesn't have to be done tonight, I mean, we can circulate it later, but I'm one of the signatures, but it does require the signatures of all seven of the council.
So does the motion, do we believe the motion needs a little bit of modification, or is it okay in present form?
The motion right now says to authorize the town of East Longmeadow to join the Westcom District. Since we're all signing, that... Since we're all signing, that we, we are the agents of the town of East Longmeadow.
So, if we're taking the vote to authorize it, to sign the signature page to join, that would also cover the reorganization that's required through the charter of that department?
Well, I don't think it does. I don't think that's decided enough.
Would that be a later vote as we get further?
I think that would be a later plan that I was, I mean, I didn't want to be presumptuous and prepare it for tonight because, depending on your decision. And also, we want to keep our current department operational through July, through June 3rd.
Well, it's not dissolving. It would be to approve going forwards for a reorganization, aren't they?
Well, if you, you can add that to the motion, and then the documents can follow, if that's your pleasure, but...
You're, you're going to come before us at that point.
That was my intention.
Right, then I don't know that it needs to be written, set in here because it's somewhat understood that that would have to happen.
Ready for a motion?
Any other questions? Okay, then we're ready.
I authorize the town of East Longmeadow to join Westcom district.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. And Mary, since, is that the signature page right there?
Yes.
Well, while we're all here this evening, we should probably sign it for you.
It's Richard's son.
She changed her name earlier this evening. Okay, we are now moving...
Well, thank you very much.
Under no business action items for next meeting that we have on here is, I don't believe I see.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for all your hard work. And so, we will move to executive session, and we do have the need for an executive session this evening.
So, under action items for next meeting, just to follow up with regards to the audit process?
Yeah, follow up for the audit process.
Tonight. Follow up for the goals.
Oh, we need to establish the goals.
Right.
And then to finalize the proposed organizational charts that I mentioned in the last action item that was necessary? I think everyone agreed to that?
The organizational charts that were in process of being updated.
Yeah.
Yes. Mary, did Jennifer speak to you about that, the organizational charts?
Yes. She did.
Good.
And she gave me a list, and I think there were six items on it. And the last of which was the organizational chart. And I think that we asked Sarah to try to start to put at least the salary structure together.
So, it's in progress?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, we need to move into executive session, so I have that motion here. If somebody would like to make that motion?
I'd like to, I'd move to approve, oh, that's the wrong one. I move to, I motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding Spark Energy.
And to return to open session to finish the agenda.
And I will second that.
That needs to be in there, yes. And this is a roll call vote? Marilyn, I'm not using last names anymore. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, we are moving now into executive session. Ready, we're back in regular session and need to entertain a motion relative to our business in executive session. And I will entertain that from one of you, please.
I'll make them, I'd move to approve to pay a prior year bill for Spark Energy for up to the amount of $208,196.09 to be funded from free cash.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we better not be. So, we have adjourned this evening at 9:53, and we'll be back in session again on Tuesday, the 10th of March. Thank you and good evening.